We will now call the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, July 19, 2022 to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Protam Jeremy Ball?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
We had no closed session, so there is nothing to report out. Pastor Nate March, if you're here, there you are. Please come up, join us in the invocation, followed by the pledge.
Would you pray with me? God, our Creator and Sustainer, the life-giver of trees and flowers and crops, insects, humans, animals, things great and small, would you, God, direct this council and its work here with your power and wisdom? God, you love order and peace, and we're so thankful for our leaders who worked to maintain that blessing and multiply it for everyone. Protect our protectors, our firemen, our police, our first responders, the medical community, give them a special grace as they engage in some of the hardest situations in our community. God, as violence has been an issue in our nation, lead us in paths of peace, give our leaders boldness to direct our community in unity through our common values and goals, and help us to remember the things that we all love and should guard for each other. Bless Lompoc, God, make this community a place of peace and rejuvenation that guests in our community would recognize the peace that you provide. God, would you just bless us? In all the different ways that you do, it would be difficult to really count your blessings. We are a needy people. We need rain for our crops and for our water supplies, and Lord, we thank you for the brief shower we had. Send more, I ask. God, your people are worried about economics and the strain of inflation and price increases. Would you ease these issues as we care for each other, as you have demonstrated to us? God, help us not to settle for prosperity of just a few or justice and peace for one group over another. God, these are hard issues, but direct this council and give them personal experience of your peace and direction in their lives and their families so they can share that with all. In your sovereign hands, we commit this time, these decisions, this community, to your care and power. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There were no presentations given elsewhere, but we do have a few that we will give tonight. And to begin, I'd like to invite Karen Ortiz forward and Chanelle O'Voyet to join me at the podium so we can provide a certificate of appreciation.
Hey, you.
Hey, you. Well, you know, it is with great sadness that Ms. Ortiz is moving out of Lompoc, but as part of your departure, we just wanted to say thank you. And this is a certificate honoring your time from June 2019 through May 2022 for your dedication and commitment to the citizens of Lompoc and its community and its residents for being a human service commissioner. It is a difficult task because we have limited funds, but this commission works really hard to review the applications and make sure the funds go out to those that will do the most with the least. And I think you've done a great job, and we will miss you. Thank you for your time with us. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, where's my Parks and Rec department? Come on up. It is Park and Recreation Month. Come on, don't be shy. The work you do is always front-facing and out and about in the community. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Lompoc, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and encouraging physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention-deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's; and whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, and activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education, which are critical to childhood development; and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Recreate, recreate, it's the same spelling. Pronunciation, Janelle, you learned this in school. Now, therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor for the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month, and encourage all citizens to recognize the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. And I just want to say to this team, I know it's been a difficult couple of years between the pandemic hampering your ability to do things, trying to stand all those programs back up, and serve the diversity that we have in this community, from our youth to our seniors and everyone in between. You're doing a great job. This is our staff. This is our full-time staff. There are a very small full-time, we have a lot of great volunteers, a lot of great part-timers, but these individuals are the ones delivering the programs. And as long as we get more resources, we'll look to improve those and expand our programs because they are vital to most of our community, being able to get out, do things, explore the world, and build confidence. So, thank you. Congratulations. And if there's any words you'd like to share?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, just wanted to give a big thanks to our full-time staff, our other full-time staff that aren't here tonight, and our 70-plus part-time staff that just make all this work. Just want to say that they do a great job, that they work hard every day, and that they come in with a smile. So, thank you, guys, for all your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And now we'll hand the floor over to Mario Guerrero to give us an update on Beatty Park.
Thank you. We are going to have a presentation by PlayCor, which Beatty Park's a national demonstration site for three different items, and we have PlayCor on the line, and we're going to put up our slideshow. And she'll be able to give an overview of kind of all the benefits and everything that go along with those sites. Thank you.
Go ahead, and you're on Slide 1, if you want to just say next slide when you're ready.
Okay, great. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, thank you so much for including me tonight. I'm thrilled to be joining you here from Tennessee in PlayCor's corporate headquarters. I certainly wish I could be there in person, but Mario has graciously offered to advance my slides for a brief presentation I prepared regarding the city of Lompoc's leadership specific to Parks and Recreation. So, PlayCor is a purpose-driven company. We develop leading research, and we offer a complete portfolio of innovative products, programs, and services to build communities through planned recreation. But prior to joining our team, I was an educator. I worked in child development and specialized in working with children with moderate to severe disabilities, so that is my passion. For 15 years, I've worked here in the Center for Outreach, Research, and Education, that is PlayCor's advocacy, education, and service arm. And by sharing knowledge, our goal is really to help communities turn research into practice. So, we partner with world-renowned scholars, and we develop research that validates the value of play and recreation across a variety of disciplines, and we offer a variety of evidence-based resources, professional development services, to really think about how communities can implement best practices and then share outcomes. Next slide. We believe that high-quality play in recreation destinations do play a critical role in promoting community health and wellness. So, our National Demonstration Site Program is one of our important initiatives to help community leaders demonstrate their commitment and investment in high-quality outdoor environment. And we love recognizing projects that are excellent, that thoughtfully align with evidence-based design, and provide resources that support data collection so that your community can share health and wellness outcomes. Next slide. So, our National Demonstration Site Program, Mario asked just to kind of give a high-level overview of what that is. These are five programs that help communities exemplify evidence-based best practices, and this is in design of outdoor park and rec destinations. One, or often a combination of destinations, can be utilized in the park planning, design, and implementation process. And the five research areas can be either around inclusion, or youth physical activity, adult fitness, or playful pathways to attract more children and families, and even playground naturalization. Okay, next slide. So, obviously, we're here tonight to celebrate, and the city of Lompoc understands the importance of utilizing a validated approach to design. So, I'm here to just once say congratulations on your project of excellence, Beatty Park. This park is a stellar leadership example, implementing three design best practices to promote inclusive play and promote physical activity for both children and adult visitors. Next slide. It was intentionally designed for people of all ages and abilities, addressing the developmental needs of the whole child. It offers a robust variety of activities that address the physical, social, emotional, cognitive, sensory, and communicative needs of all children, including those with disabilities. Next slide. And it was also carefully designed to ensure that children are active through play. This park provides six key elements of play that align to physical education standards and offers a developmentally appropriate progression of skills. This keeps kids moving and helps them reach higher levels of physical activity. Next slide. And adolescents and adults can also reap the benefits of outdoor exercise at Beatty Park. This park offers a total body workout through an adult fitness area, and this provides aerobic fitness, or muscle strengthening, flexibility, and balance activities. Next slide. So, tonight, I'm really just excited to share some highlights from Beatty Park's site-specific impact report that PlayCor has put together. Our data services team worked hard to recently share and combine this information with your Parks and Recreation Department, and this report provides insights to describe and evaluate the performance of this park using information about park users, the usage of the park, and the user experiences. So, this report was gathered from 62 unique user survey scans from a national demonstration site onsite signage. There's actually three sites for the three different designations that this park met the requirements for, and this site signage encourages visitors to complete a survey. And so, this data will continue to be collected, but the information I'm sharing with you tonight is about 219 site users. Okay, next slide. So, the site visitors that took surveys reported an overwhelming level of satisfaction with Beatty Park. So, you can see here, 97% of survey visitors were satisfied with their experience, with a majority, 88%, reporting being very satisfied with their site visit. Less than half of those responding to the survey said it was their first visit, and so that means they were coming there again and again. And all visitors that did this survey said they planned to visit Beatty Park again. Next slide. So, we captured information about the characteristics of groups of visitors at the site, and data from your park shows a prominent representation from children and adult groups. 7% of respondents had at least three out of the five age groups represented. It is attracting visitors of all ages, and that's great because that means it's multi-generational, and it was designed that way. Of course, we expect children to be a high percentage of those users, but as you can see here, 19% of the people going to Beatty Park are older adults, 65 and over. These intergenerational experiences are important for mental health and emotional well-being of all users. Next slide. Physical activity rates can capture how well a site supports healthy behaviors, and 80% of the visitors are meeting those recommended physical activity levels. That's 30 minutes of physical activity when they visit Beatty Park. So, research shows that just 20 minutes of time spent in a park can improve someone's sense of well-being. And 30% of respondents visit the outdoor space more than once a week. Next slide. So, we also, end of the survey, we asked visitors their top three reasons for their park visit. We captured details about why each reason was beneficial to those users, and the top reasons that are kind of being compiled here at Beatty Park indicate that physical health and lifestyle behaviors, social-emotional health, and the environment are the top three reasons that people are visiting the site. And we hope that these initial findings that I've shared tonight can be celebrated, and that these statistics and quotes can support your efforts in continuing to advocate for great parks, and generate awareness with the members of your community, and measure the results of your investment in public spaces. This report is just the beginning of what we can learn about how your parks in Lompoc can perform, how they meet intended goals, and how park users react to and experience them. We look forward to continuing to collect data, not only at Beatty Park, but in the upcoming Thompson Park project that will also be designated as a national demonstration site for promoting physical activity. And we hope to continue to partner together and more in the future. Next slide. So, I think Mario is going to speak later about an opportunity through the California Park and Recreation Society and a partnership with PlayCor and Game Time through their Healthy Play statewide initiative. And since 2015, this initiative has deployed research across the state of California and close to 75 national demonstration sites. So, we invite the city of Lompoc to join our collective efforts through this unique partnership to continue to turn research into practice across the state. Next slide. So, again, thank you so much for having me this evening and for continuing to champion Parks and Recreation as an essential service. I truly appreciate your leadership. I want to thank Mario and his team. They've been a joy to work with. I'm grateful for the time you have given me to highlight the positive impact that the city of Lompoc has had on creating healthier, happier communities through the power of planned recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Eventually, everyone learns how to pronounce Lompoc. You've just got to give some people a break because the more important thing here was Beatty Park, and she got that right. So, I think it's really exciting that this park has been so well-received by the community and that we're partnering with them on Thompson Park's replacement, and may hear some more about it during Item 4. Any other questions, comments for Mario? All right, great. Thank you so very much, and thanks again to all the staff for that. All right, back to the agenda. City manager report, please.
I just wanted to update the council that we are proposing a utility commission meeting August 8th, so I thought I'd give you a heads-up. So, if you guys wanted to appoint anybody on August 2nd meeting, you'd have that opportunity. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to consent calendar. We'll open the floor for Consent Calendar public comment. If you'd like to speak on the item, you may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium, and you have three minutes. While we wait to see if there are any phone calls at 805-875-8201, I'll go ahead and read the process. Consent Calendar. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Did we have any written communication on Consent Calendar? No, ma'am, nothing. Thank you. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on Consent Calendar and bring it back to council. Are there any short questions or concerns? Councilmember Ball?
I'll make a motion to accept Consent Calendar.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Councilmember Megan seconds that.
That's short.
Yep, you got it. All right, seeing no questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, we don't have any more staff presentations. We will open the floor for general oral communications regarding city matters. You have three minutes. You may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Deb Andrews, Lompoc. It's unfortunate the new water fountain is broken. Water fountains are a big deal for me. I encourage you to pursue a search for a city manager capable of accomplishing tasks important to citizens. Noteworthy improvements to benefit residents at the parks. I'm just really excited about the park improvements in Lompoc. At Ryan Park, the movies in the park, some of the tennis courts have been repaired and were in use when I visited. Thank you. It's great that tennis lessons are being offered. Medians have been cleared and replanted. They'll be lovely, and that will send a great message to travelers that go through Lompoc. Thank you. At Beatty Park, I attempted to use the exercise stations along the jogging course. The view is lovely from that elevation. One can look out over the whole city and beyond. Unfortunately, the stations are not usable. It appears the wooden boards, posts, and instructions have been left to deteriorate for many years. Please repair these stations. They are a positive option for all to exercise and stay in shape at no cost. I was surprised posted at the new pickleball courts, the Health Officer Order 2020 8.2 for COVID in Santa Barbara County. It includes social distancing. Water fountains should be turned off. The water fountain was turned off. What is it about restricting water? A whole page of nonsense was attached to that pickleball court, all the things you shouldn't do because of COVID, and you're outside. Viruses and bacteria don't operate like that. Viruses don't respect social distancing. The sign listed a number of everyday symptoms to be alarmed about and reason to exit: coughing, sneezing, runny nose, diarrhea, and you should go home. In other words, you can have your pickleball court as a privilege, not a right. One sneeze, and you're done. Be scared. Take down these signs. Stop the unconstitutional acts against us. People rule. The people are sovereign. God bless our restored republic of the United States.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Good evening, council and staff. I'm Luis Castaneda. I'm here representing the Roots Dispensary in Lompoc. I've been a resident for over 25 years, and I'm here to speak on the amount of retail cannabis in our town. So, there's a lot of opinions when it comes to cannabis, some good, some bad, some in favor, some opposing it, but I think we can all come to the agreement that it's too much for our town. There's too many retail locations. Now, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure it out. It's not sustainable, and trust me, we know a few, being that we're so close to the base. But when we started this, Lompoc was really hoping to be a destination for tourists coming to see cannabis, which we've already accomplished that. Now, it's tending to be a little bit overboard. So, I'm an advocate for the industry, but before that, I'm an advocate for our town. This is where I grew up. This is where my kids were born, and this is home. So, there's nothing more that we would like than to have businesses come and thrive, and right now, what we're seeing is the opposite. Cannabis attracts higher rates for rent, and there's local property owners, local businesses, I should say, that are scared for their leases, right? They've been told by their landlords, hey, if cannabis comes in, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to take it because it's four more times the rent, which leaves our small businesses kind of in limbo. They don't know what the future holds, but not only that, startups. It's too extensive to start up in Lompoc, right? We've heard that a bunch. We get stuck with not the best businesses. Our city's known for not being sustainable, but we want to help that. We want to change that. So, we're requesting that you please add it to the agenda for a future meeting. Let's come up with some scenarios, some options we could possibly come up with to make this better for our community, better for all of our businesses, and better for Lompoc long-term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Lindsay Silva. I'm a fourth-generation Lompokian cannabis medical patient and bartender-manager at the Greenhouse Cannabis Boutique on H Street. The Greenhouse was the fourth dispensary to open in Lompoc back in August 31, 2019. A small female-owned sole proprietorship in the heart of downtown Lompoc, maintaining the integrity of a small, locally-owned, and operated-thriving downtown that is crucial to Lompoc's general plan for economic growth. One of the best things about Lompoc is the sense of community. With a population of 44,444, we are a small town with a big heart. We know our neighbors, and everyone feels like family. As a cannabis medical patient, the opportunity for Lompoc to grow and have vitality economically with a valuable cannabis industry was something I personally support and showed my support by joining the Cannabis Coalition, attending ad hoc meetings, and voting. Unfortunately, the city of Lompoc doesn't seem to see this community's value, but rather only sees dollar signs. Since opening the cannabis market within the city in 2018, little has been done to support the cannabis industry. When voters asked for an open market, we reasonably expected our local government to develop a cannabis department so that the industry that's new to our city would not only have representation, but support and understanding for everyone. We ask that tax dollars generated from cannabis be allocated appropriately and with transparency. Zoning was limited initially and on purpose. Since changing the zoning recently, areas like downtown are saturated with cannabis retail stores, with five proposed on the same block, for example. In order to maintain economic vitality with the cannabis industry, the state suggests one dispensary for every 10,000 residents. Lompoc adopted an open market, and 11 dispensaries are open and currently operating as of today. We currently have a ratio of 2.5 dispensaries per 10,000 residents. With 15 applicants still pending for a total of 26 retail dispensary storefronts by the end of this year, Lompoc is gearing up to have the most dispensaries per capita in the entire state of California, with a ratio of 5.88 dispensaries per 10,000. This will devalue the current cannabis businesses and operations by 70 to 80%, presenting an undue hardship to essential businesses. Without a proper plan, this feels like a money grab and another failed attempt at economic development in Lompoc. In order to create a vital, sustainable cannabis market, we implore you to implement the following: a moratorium on new and pending cannabis retail licenses, a cannabis department at the city to represent the cannabis industry and medical patients alike. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have a caller? Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, and my name is Tulimi Delgado, and I serve as an outreach analyst in the Department of Insurance. I'm here to give an update on the work we have been doing to protect California consumers. So, since 2019, we've met with more than 25,000 people in 40 counties to specifically hear concerns around availability and affordability of homeowners' insurance. January 2022, Commissioner Lara and the state's emergency response and readiness agencies created the Safer From Wildfires Framework, which is a list of achievable effective measures for homes and businesses. The ultimate goal here is to protect consumers by reducing wildfire risk in their communities, making insurance available and affordable to all Californians. So, let's go over the three steps or areas of protection under the Safer From Wildfires Framework. It begins with protecting the structures. This means giving you specific things you can do to ensure your roof, walls, vents, windows, and are upgraded to be safer from wildfires. Number two is protecting your immediate surroundings, such as your backyard, the decks, or other outbuildings. Finally, involving the entire community in the fire protection. It includes homes like Firewise, which brings neighbors together to protect their homes. You can see the list of specific things you can do on our website at insurance.ca.co. You can see the list of specific things you can do on our website at insurance.ca.gov. By making homes and businesses safer, we can bring risk down and bring costs down, too. The commissioner's actions are focused on safety and transparency. His new regulations do this in three ways. Number one is pricing. He's requiring insurance companies to incorporate the Safer From Wildfires Framework into their pricing. Insurance companies will have to then submit a new rate filing that recognizes safety. Two, transparency. Consumers will receive their property's wildfire risk score and the reasons for it, and the Department of Insurance will have oversight. Three is the right of appeal. Consumers will be able to appeal their rare determination when they have done the work. We look to have the regulations implemented by the end of the summer. Once implemented, the insurance companies will have to submit new rate filings and consumers should start seeing these changes early next year. That concludes my presentation and I want to remind you that we are here to help you with any of your insurance questions. Please call us at eight hundred nine two seven four three five seven or go to the website at insurance.ca.gov.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dennis Bazanich. I'm the former deputy county executive officer and I worked to put together all the cannabis ordinances for the county. So I have some lived experience in the regulatory structures and a lot about the market, actually, the cannabis market. I've watched what the city of Lompoc has done over the years and frankly, as some of the folks from the industry said tonight, I think the market has changed significantly in the last four years since we started regulating. I do think some form of reduced number of licenses would benefit the city overall, would benefit your tax revenues as well. And something to think about is, you know, what can you do? What can the city and the staff do to be able to think a little bit more? So this list, I'm going to ask your city clerk to distribute when you can to the board member or to the council members. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay, so that's just a list of all the folks who have applied and have actual permits in the city of Lompoc at this point. So I appreciate the city clerk producing that. But I would ask you to really think through what the city wants to do with its cannabis industry and consider some limitations on that. And I'm here to help if you need to. I've left county government and opened my own consulting firm and so if you need some help, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Good evening, members of the council. Dennis, you never leave minutes on the table. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Joe Armendaras, representing Armendaras Partners. First of all, I think you should be, as a council, congratulated because I think I'm correct in saying that you were the first council in the county to open the doors to a cannabis industry. And that doesn't surprise me because historically, the city of Lompoc has been pretty progressive when it comes to being pro-industry, pro-business. And I'm certainly sympathetic to that vision and philosophy of being pro-business and being pro-industry. And I think that in Lompoc, one of the traditions even with respect to the base is seeing how we can sort of leverage, you know, the economic value of some of the assets that we have in our county, whether it's the base, UCSB, the tribe. And I would submit to you that the cannabis industry is a potential proverbial golden goose for the city. And as Dennis suggested, a lot's happened since twenty eighteen. It's a fascinating industry. My company, we've been able to work with several cities in California. We worked very closely with Grover Beach, Morro Bay, San Luis Obispo, Turlock, the Moore. We've had conversations with Bulton and Guadalupe and Fresno and Lindsay. So, you know, we understand the subject matter pretty well. We understand the challenges that a city has when it's looking at this industry in terms of what it wants that industry to be. I think Lompoc has, frankly, a performance deficit in terms of what the industry could be providing. And I think the objective should be to develop an industry for the future that meets all the needs of all of the stakeholders, including the city, the industry, and the residents. As Dennis suggested, and Dennis and I work together, we are a resource for the city. We can help you in that process. We would suggest, and as a former council member in the city of Carpinteria, we did something similar back in two thousand seven or eight where we were faced with an issue that was where time was of the essence and we had to make a decision very quickly and we instituted an interim moratorium. You might want to seriously consider what that would allow you to do in terms of stopping the clock because as I'm looking at the clock, you do need to stop the clock so that some of these issues can be unpacked and better understood and you can have a dialogue. And so I would suggest that you consider doing that.
Seeing no one else rise and no additional callers, we will close oral communication and bring it back to the agenda. Item number three, designation of voting delegates and alternate for League of California Cities Annual Conference. So I am planning to attend. I've signed up. Has any other council member signed up or is considering attending? Has our city manager signed up to attend? Mr. Albro, are you attending?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So that leaves myself and the city manager attending. So one of us should be the voting delegate and one should be the alternate. And historically, council members are voting in it. So I'm happy to be the voting delegate and allow the city manager to be alternate if you're okay with that. Councilmember Starbuck.
So moved.
Yes. Seconded.
We've almost got a vote right there. Any other comments before we take a vote? Seeing none. That passes five zero. Thank you so very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution number sixty-five thirty-three, authorizing submission of an application for California Foundation for Parks and Recreation statewide Healthy Play Initiative grant for Ryan Park Playground Project and approving supplemental appropriations. And that will be Mr. Mario Guerrero.
Thank you, Mayor, the council, the audience in the audience and at home. Super excited to have this opportunity from the last presentation that was given. There is a CPRS statewide healthy play initiative and staff's recommendation to city council is to adopt the resolution number six five three three two two, authorizing the submittal of an application for funding in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for California Foundation CPRS for Ryan Park Playground Project and approving supplemental appropriations of four hundred thousand for the project. A little background, CPRS, PlayCorps, and Game Time, they're strategically partnering up to support and promote Parks Make Life Better through education and funding opportunities. And the goals of the initiative are, just briefly, statewide education, which you heard on the previous presentation, funding. Game Time will provide up to two million dollars in matching funds to CPRS members. So that's real exciting. Outcomes and data collection, and those are their goals. Some discussion, Ryan Park is our oldest park in the city and the northern section of seven point five acres was donated to the city in nineteen-ten by Mary Ryan. Here's a picture of our current playground. That playground was installed in two thousand eight and if, you really can't see in the pictures, but it's kind of rusting out on top and throughout, just from the weather conditions and our salty air, it's fourteen years old. And there's also, not in this picture, the playground that was taken out in the circle section coming in from Cypress. So we're trying to address those needs. So when the opportunity came about to apply for this, the Ryan Park, the playground area was selected as it will be the most utilized site in town. If you go by there, there's people there throughout the day doing exercises and walking the tracks and playing on the playground. And again, it's big enough for us to be able to utilize the program of the national demonstration sites to get two, three, or possibly four different of the national demonstration sites. So staff, again, have been searching for funding opportunities to reduce the impact of the general fund and to address our needs and our desired improvements for our city parks and facilities. So we want to show what the possibilities are. And again, these are just the conceptual drawings. And again, if we approved here to apply and to get funding, we will go out like the other Beatty Park and Thompson Park and get the public input and see what the public wants and what we could do for Ryan Park. So you can see that this part here, this is more of a five to twelve section. Back here is more of your two to five and then your fitness equipment. Here's some other views of the equipment. And again, these are just possibilities. And then we come to the budget, just in general, it's a fifty percent, it's a match. So we are applying for two hundred thousand dollars for the grant. So if we are awarded that, then the total project with the four hundred thousand dollars of appropriations would be a total of a six hundred thousand dollar project. Just an overview at the end, but in conclusion, the one-time grant, the program for CPRS and approval of the appropriations will allow the city to take advantage of this funding opportunity to address the installation of a new playground in the city's oldest park that will greatly be utilized by the community and visitors to Lompoc and reduce the impact to the general fund. And I'm here to answer any questions about the project or the grant.
Councilmember Ball.
So I think this is potentially, if we get behind it, this is a wonderful idea, Ryan Park, one of the older parks. But one of the differences that I want to point out between Beatty Park and Ryan Park, they're both beautiful places. Ryan Park is surrounded mostly by single-family homes. No problem, that's great. Beautiful spot on the hill. As we get down into Ryan Park, we're surrounded by a lot denser housing. So there's a lot more people of all ages that really benefit from something as inclusionary as this. So I hope that we can get behind it. Obviously, it's requiring some sort of match, but another way to look at it is we're getting some leverage or a discount on something that could be really helpful to our community. So I'd like to hear more from everyone else, but I'm very excited about it.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Are we committed on using that, as you defined the circle, concrete circle, as part of that park structure?
No. So that was just something to try to get a visual of what's possible, but we could put grass in that area and make the area over there bigger.
Kind of maybe important to some and irrelevant to others, but that was originally a tethered car racetrack and probably put in shortly after the park was given to the city. It does have historical significance. There's actual documentation of that at the Historical Society and the Lompoc Museum. So they're not going to mess with it, tear it up, or anything else down there. I mean, that is going to stay.
If we did a design of that nature, then that would be taken out, but that's more of a...
Yeah, it's kind of unusual when you see a fifty-foot with an exact bevel all the way around it. It was built very specifically for that purpose and it, there's probably not very many people left that raced tether cars there, but there is a sentimental value to some people in Lompoc and it is documented as what it was. So if we could do anything to leave that alone for now, in case tether car racing ever becomes popular again, we would be at the forefront here.
Any more questions for staff before we go? Councilmember Ball.
I have a quick question. And again, just to find me as close as we can. Every year in any park that has a play structure, there's some sort of rough estimate on cost of maintaining that. If we were to make this improvement, obviously, there would probably be some added cost of maintaining. It's really important that our folks here have a park that stays in a working condition over time. Have we, I know we don't have exact numbers, but how should we, as a council, look at updating the way that we maintain this and putting monies aside for that potentially?
Yeah, so typically, the most expensive things on playgrounds are, is the surfaceing. So on your typical wood chips, it's cheaper than to install, but you have to have staff there on a weekly basis or sometimes a daily basis, depending on what the usage is, because if the chips are moved away from their distinct areas, then they're non-compliant and your drop zones vary. So that's why the pour-in place, that's recommended for the inclusive play, then that's kind of a long-term fix where you're not wasting those resources on a weekly or daily basis. But those, again, due to the high wear, you're looking anywhere from seven to ten years. So some of that can be patched. We were pretty, on Beatty Park, we put in our high-volume areas more of a dense pour-in place, so it held up on the raremore and there were distinct stars. So if people coming out of the slide shoots and they start rubbing and making holes, we can just replace those stars instead of everything out on the perimeter. So just strategically, how we did that, it would help with the ongoing maintenance.
Councilmember Cordova.
Mario, how much money did the city pay for the city themselves? Or how much money came out of the general fund for Beatty Park?
Beatty Park, I believe, was totally CDBG funded and partly due with the prop sixty-eight money than that were being reimbursed. So there was zero to that. Thompson Park, off the top of my head, there's HRPP money, CDBG, and some general fund on the small.
So, and I ask that because I think it's very important to consider, too, when we're making such a decision like this, because four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to pull out of the general fund. We get that. But at the same time, we've seen the improvements in some of our parks, not because we've actually invested the money into it, but because staff has gone out and they've done the work to get the grants and work hard to represent the need of this community and make it happen. And we've seen what a major success and how the community has come out and really, you know, participated in the use of these parks and these areas. I look at it also from the section of, or from the portion of, how do we maintain these parks? Because I know when I first got on the council, a lot of the reason why we wouldn't approve money to go towards the replacement of equipment and stuff at our parks was because we also didn't have money to maintain it and that was kind of the message back then. But at the same time, I think it's responsible for us to take the committed approach that we do have to maintain it. That's part of doing business for our city. So if we take the non-committing, you know, whimsical approach of we'll deal with it when it happens or when it breaks, or we're never going to have the money for it, we have to be, as you said, strategic and tactful with the way that we maintain it. And it's been a great gift to be able to have some of these parks redone. So in the overall scope of things, that's what I'm considering is four hundred thousand. Why isn't this park up for grant money? Other than the two hundred thousand, there's no way for us to get, to cover the whole thing on this? Why is that?
CDBG money has already been allocated on other projects, the Nigiam, the concession stand, so the CDBG money has been already allocated on that part. stand, so the CDBG money has been already allocated on that part. One of the benefits, I think, if we were able then to do this, it would take a lot of the wear and tear off of Beatty. So Beatty Park, I said, seven to eight years on wear and tear, we're probably getting every month, like, three or four months of usage from the amount of people. So if we can continue with the progress of upgrading our playgrounds, I think it'll spread out that opportunity and won't have such an impact on just one as well. So I think we'll be saving money in the long run as well on maintenance if we can kind of get some of the people to go to other parks instead of everybody just focusing on our one, the playground of the Beatty.
Yeah, definitely a very important decision to be made tonight. And I don't know, city manager, if you could touch on whether this 400,000 is feasible out of...
I think it's feasible, and I know it was a very tough decision for me to make it, but you know, when I see 200,000 that we can actually infuse into our parks through a grant, it's not as much as I would like to see, but we are hoping to get Pioneer Park done, too, as well through direct appropriations. We got the skate park, we're kind of trying to hit all the parks downtown, and I do believe it'll be sustainable because when we start looking at how we're going to set up our future budgets, one of the things we need to make sure that we put in that budget is how we're going to replace our fire engines, how are we going to maintain our park equipment? And these are all real tough decisions and questions that we've been working behind the scenes to make sure that we can maintain them. And I agree with you, it's a very good question, and like I said, it was tough for me to say, yeah, do it, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. And I do think, you know, it's decades of lack of having that committed funding and that proper budget is what caused our community to fall into a very deteriorative state. I think we've been able to make an impact, or this council and staff has been able to make an impact in the recent couple of years. A lot of help has come in, which has been great. So I think these are great opportunities for us to consider, but I also want to bring, you know, to a forefront, is that what we invest into our community says a lot about the quality of life and how our residents feel about living here and how they perceive their quality of life and how they perceive, you know, their success as a family or as individuals. So I think this is a very, this is a very important decision for me today.
Any more questions before we go to public comment? All right, seeing no questions, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you'd like to speak on this item, you may either come to the podium for your three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. The floor is open.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. As I've stated numerous times at this podium, I think parks and recreation are priority number one for the city, for the families, for anybody coming through Lompoc. Very important, exercise, getting together, having meals, cooking meals outside, family celebrations, the weather's always perfect here. This should be priority number one. If you have to eliminate some other things from the city budget, I think you should do that. Parks and Rec should be at the top for citizens.
Thank you. Did we have any written communication on item number four?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, we'll close public comment on item number four. I think that, well, there's a phone call, let's open it for a second to make sure it is related to the item. You're live at the Lompoc City Council meeting, you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. I wanted to thank the city council and the city staff for all the work they've done on the parks, it sounds wonderful. I have observed all the participation at Beatty Park, and I am aware that it is very well-used, so I look forward to the improvements at the other parks. Thank you very much for all the work you're putting into this, appreciate it.
Thank you for that call. And now we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. To councilmember Cordova's point and to councilmember Ball's point, we have long underfunded and underinvested in these infrastructures. And the opportunity, whether it be through CDBG grants or Prop-68 grants, or any opportunity that we have to find matching funds, we shouldn't walk away from. And so while it may seem like a lot, creating additional opportunities at other parks is really important, given the usage that, you're absolutely right, is happening at Beatty. Beatty is being used not just by our community, it is regularly being used by Beulton's Parks and Rec Department, visitors coming from Santa Barbara talking about it, I have friends coming up from other areas just because of the size and the amazingness of this park. So if we can expand that and take advantage of this opportunity and improve one more park in our community, it benefits all of us, and it is part of that quality of life. One of the things we are constantly hammered on is, I came here for an interview and my family went to play at your parks, and it wasn't safe because it's rusting, or it's breaking, or it didn't exist. And so this helps everyone have an opportunity to be a kid and watch our kids and be healthy. And I can't imagine a better use of $400,000 in opportunity to get some matching funds for this. So if there are no further questions, I will make a motion that we accept staff recommendation for item number four. Councilmember Ball?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other questions or thoughts? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did we have any other written communications for any other matters?
No, ma'am, nothing.
None? Okay, thank you. This is your final opportunity to speak on city matters for two minutes, oral communications, two minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201, or come to the podium. I have no entertaining stories, I apologize. I will have to create a bevy of them to get us through these 30 seconds of delay. Maybe I'll go to the Historical Society and get some history, and we'll do snippets of history in your moments of... See, I knew there'd be a caller. As long as they tell me so.
I just tuned into this, and I just wanted to make a comment about you guys voting to do some restructuring of Ryan Park. I think it's a really great idea. I do take my granddaughter to Beatty Park quite often, and she is two years old. My only, my only desire, or my only, I guess you could say, positive growth for it would be to make more toddler space. Because when I take my two-year-old over to Beatty Park, yes, it's beautiful, it's wonderful, but we need more toddler spot, more swings. Okay, so when you guys go and you create this thing that you're going to create at Ryan Park, you know, you might want to think about the little ones, the little, little ones, because there are a lot of them, and there's mommies on the park with their strollers at the park. And that Beatty Park is so congested because everybody really is using it, I live in Lompoc. I would just want you to think beyond, outside the box, when you go to create whatever you're going to create over at Ryan Park, to exceed what's been done at Beatty Park, I would also suggest some kind of little waiting area where the little kids can get, a little fountain. That, I lived in Palm Springs where they have little fountains and little waiting places where little toddlers can get wet, kids love that. I would encourage everybody sitting here to think outside the box when you go to build this thing. I'm all for it. I hope it comes soon. I surely will use it. I thank you for your time, and I hope it passes. Thank you.
Thank you for that call. We will close oral communication. And just a reminder that there will be opportunity, if the grant is approved, to provide feedback to the Ryan Park concept when it comes forward. So don't hesitate to contribute your ideas at that time, but staff was busy taking notes, so thank you for your comments. All right, we are almost done with our agenda, so very close. Let's do council comments and meeting reports, and councilmember Vega, you got the floor.
Yes, thank you. I do have a council request, and I'd like to ask it staff and ask the council to allow staff to bring back some sort of review on the municipal code regarding bikes on sidewalks. It's possibly a very old, old part of the code, and let's find out regarding public safety. We just had a little presentation tonight, and we could wait forever for that to happen, but we could, I'd like us to, for the staff to update us and find out what the rules and regulations are, and if it's even enforceable, and something we can do to allow a little bit better, more safety for the bike paths, you know, a little more sharing with the pedestrians, and if we could. So that's my, one of my requests.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
If I could get you guys to allow us to get some more information so that we can have a discussion over it.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
I'll give you a second on that, but I would like to tie that in with councilwoman Cordova's request that we review our old ordinances. Let's move that one to the top and move on with our ordinance review. This has been something, I don't know when you asked for this, councilwoman Cordova, but it's been a while, and maybe this would be one we could put a time and date line on. A second.
All right, I will give you a third. I don't want to put a time and date because I know that it's something he needs to consult with the police department on, but I'm sure they could give us a timeline of when they could bring it back. Right, Mr. Malami? Because you're in the process of reviewing some already, but putting a time and date without checking with PD?
I would have to talk to the police department to know how long they would need to give me the information to put into the staff report.
Okay.
But I'd assume that it could come back in the next couple of months.
Okay. Is that enough, Mr. Vega?
Thank you. I have a second request also. I think it's been way too long, and I think it's up to us to give direction. I think since we're speaking about parks, if we could also have a request to bring back any kind of, kind of direction we can have toward the stage at Ryan Park. We use as an economic base here, but you know, to me, it seems like the stage is an embarrassment. It's been there so many years, and to have someone in private parties or flower festival groups or anybody else have to go up there and personally put up any kind of barriers as far as walls and anything, I think we should look at, while the park and recreations are doing their grants and everything, look at something and see what we can do to make Lompoc a little bit better for as far as the music and the arts and people doing presentations up there. I think we're ignoring that part of Ryan Park. I think that would make, aesthetically, I think it would be wonderful to have a brand-new stage, something with some walls up there and stuff so the musicians could use it, and we could actually have some events, a few more events in the park regardless of the wind sometimes and the weather changing. So that would be my second request. If I could get someone to at least allow staff to come back with information to see how we can secure funding, to see what we can do and focus on that. We're doing playgrounds, so let's give them another thing to focus on and help the community.
Councilmember Ball?
So I'll give you a second on that, and I'm just hopeful that we can do the Hollywood Bowl style. Just a thought.
No, no, I got you.
Councilmember Cordova?
So if I'm not mistaken, they already do have it designated on their priorities list, and so, I mean, this is just bringing it back quicker or sooner maybe than what staff had already listed on there.
So as you all have that priority list, we utilize that list every time a grant opportunity comes up to try and see what will qualify it and to search for grants. As you mentioned earlier, we've been quite successful in getting a lot of different grants to address some of the items on those lists. The stage is very important to us also in addressing that, since we hear all the complaints from all of the community members. The challenge there is there haven't been any grants that are where the stage would be appropriate. So if I did come back, which I don't mind doing, it will be for appropriations from the general fund, which I'm not sure if the city manager would be happy with me about that. But I'll bring it.
You know, if I could say this, okay, that's just another way of saying it's not going to come back, and to put it on a list that never comes back, I would like to prioritize that and see what we can do to expedite it, because we can find money for other things, but we always say, wow, general fund, oh, we don't have money for this. Look how long that stage has been there without any improvements, you know? So I think that we owe it to ourselves to at least direct them to do something in a more expedient manner. If you guys could at least support that, even though it's on the agenda, let's see what we can do to at least kind of focus on that, too, also.
So, I mean, I will give you your third. I just think that I want to formally acknowledge the fact that it is on their priority list. They've been working through that, like every other department and division has been working through their needs list, so I don't want to take away from the fact that it was on there for them as well, and so I'll give you your third on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, thank you, and nothing else to report.
Okay. Let's see, next on the list is Ms. Cordova.
So my council request is going to be that, I think we've heard from Mr. Castaneda twice or three times with a request for the council to consider having a discussion. If the council sees it appropriate, and I gain support on this, I would like to at least have us put it on our list of things to discuss in the future to bring back and consider, does the city need to create a moratorium for this industry, and what can it look like, and begin the discussion?
So I would definitely second that. I would just hope that that would come with some sense of urgency. I think that, you know, no one knew how this whole thing would play out when we stood up the original things, a lot of things have changed, but we're seeing businesses come and go, and we're seeing businesses that got fixed and opened already look like they're falling apart. So I just want to make sure that we're trying our best to sustain the benefit that we are getting from those players, but if we wait for a year or two to talk about this, it could blow up in our face. So as long as we do it sooner than later, I'm definitely second that.
I'll give you a third on that. Like I say, I think the direction as far as the discussion, I think it's something we should have. They had numbers over here that said 5.88 versus per 10,000. I'd like to see a more refined number, that they could bring back more information on smaller cities that, you know, a little bit more competitive where something does work. I'd like to hear something like that come back, so that they have solid numbers, so we're not discriminating against anybody else. I'll give you a third.
Councilmember, yes, city clerk.
Is this specifically for retail only? Well, is that the request, retail only?
I think that we should consider all. That's what I would want, and if the other two council members that are supporting that would consider that. And I don't know if it's too much of a discussion for us to also bring forth, I know that it had been left over from before, our discussion with regards to regulation of the industry and what, you know, I don't know.
Councilmember Ball?
So my second comes with, I'd hope that we'd have a top-to-bottom, you know, review of this. And again, it's not, doesn't have to be political or rights and wrongs, it's just an analysis of where we started, what got put together, what worked, what didn't work, where's the gaps, where are we missing it? How can we do better? I think that's reasonable, and we have to, we should be doing this as soon as possible.
So are you agreeing that all of the permits or just retail?
Everything.
Councilmember Vega?
And also with an end to discussion, I know that we'll have this discussion, find out what the state's responsibilities might be also in kind of oversight, that maybe, let's find out if there's any gaps to find out maybe if we're not getting that also. let's find out if there's any gaps, to find out maybe if we're not getting that also, okay? Because I think the state has a responsibility also, since they're also making, making money off of this, so it's part of our discussion.
What I'm understanding the motion, the request to be, is for a discussion item to come back to council, to discuss issues related to potentially imposing a moratorium on new cannabis license approvals. So can bring that back to council?
Correct, for all branches of the industry. But also, what I had requested was to also then, if possible, if staff sees it fit, and if the council supporters agree, then that we also bring back the discussion, which we left off more than a year and a half ago, with regards to, I don't like to say the word regulation, but the discussion that we had about, I think it was regulation, we called it at that time.
So it was an oversight?
Oversight, there you go. Thank you, Mayor Osborne, oversight, I think that sounds much better.
Councilmember Ball?
That was a pending item that was left open.
I don't recall what that item was.
I know it came to council before, to have a team.
The Enforcement Task Force?
We had the discussion, and we were, the ending of the discussion was, if the tax measure adjustment passed, once we began collecting it, we could then reassess based upon the collection of revenue, if we would be able to afford what was about a million dollars of investment into the additional staffing. And that was put on hold until we had begun to collect the revenue, the adjusted revenue, and since we just began collecting it in April, and it hasn't been up to a million dollars in additional revenue, that conversation hasn't been brought back, if I follow the expectations.
If you could, it'd be better if you would separate them, because we were planning to bring in the enforcement or overview, and based upon the manufacturing tax, to you guys shortly anyway, so if you wanted to separate those, it'd probably be easier for staff to provide those to staff reports for you.
Understood. I'm okay with that. Do you need any additional clarity from the first request?
I don't think so. I'm just envisioning it as a discussion of whether the council wants to move forward with steps to potentially put a moratorium on cannabis licenses.
Okay.
I have a quick question. So I know that's a very specific thing, but are we also going to have the opportunity to generally speak of tweaking the overall ordinance, if we as a council so choose, or is that not to be included?
I didn't hear that as part of the request, but if you'd like to, then we can add that. We can have the discussion be any revisions to the cannabis regulations, if that's what you'd like to do.
And again, I'm not trying to shock any industry, or anything like that, but we've been, we've been approached with several issues, and part of that is not just the retail issue, but the impact upon other small businesses, worried about their futures because of certain zonings, and us promising, potentially, if cannabis comes, we're going to take their money versus yours, so any discussion that we can have, through some of the details and nuance, to make sure that we're tightening up the overall ordinance would be my hope, but I'll take whatever we're getting here.
Councilmember Cordova?
So I would be, I would be in support of reviewing the existing ordinance at that time.
Okay.
That's what we can call it.
Okay.
With a possible action, if we see it fit at that time, based on discussion, or whatever. Does that make sense?
Well, I don't think there'll be a possible action, because I'll have to draft the ordinance.
It'll have to be a follow-through, got it. Okay, just review.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that what I have down is correct. Councilmember Cordova has requested a future agenda item for a review of the entire cannabis ordinance. It was seconded by Councilmember Ball, third by Councilmember Vega. There was also a request by Councilmember Cordova for a review of the tax, the cannabis tax measure that was approved, and the Oversight Office that staff had previously presented, and that was also seconded by Councilmember Ball, and then carried by Councilmember Vega. Is that correct?
It is, and the city manager said he was planning to bring that back soon anyway, so I don't think it needs to be an additional request, because he already has it planned, is what I heard. Head nod?
That's correct. If you want to do a council request, it's up to you, you don't need to, it's, it's going to come back.
Okay, so we don't need a council request on that. Okay. All right. And where was I? Councilmember Starbuck?
I have no reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball?
Okay, let's see, just a couple of quick things. Was able to attend promotion ceremony for, I forget his title, but Brian Guerra, sergeant, sergeant, yes. And I loved attending these promotion ceremonies, anyone that's working their way up, I think that's great, but then I got to learn he was fourth generation, and his family's been in farming for many, many years here. It was just great to see, just one more example of our, some of our local folks really digging in deep, and trying to work hard and better this community, I really appreciate that. Thank you again for the invite. The other thing is, if you have your head stuck in the sand, and didn't know about Old Town on Friday nights, you're missing one of the funnest, most exciting things you can do, just to get out, see people, do some activities, grab a beer, grab some food, see your neighbors. So if you didn't know about it, it's, Old Town is every Friday night, I think it's the next four weeks, but it starts at about five, and goes to seven or eight. I know we have a public safety night that's coming up soon, I think Ag Night's coming up this weekend. But anyway, if you're looking for something to do, or you have some out-of-town friends, you maybe start inviting them to Lompoc, because we actually have something to do. That's all I got.
All right. Meetings. I attended the Sheriff's Project Opioid Monthly Meeting, and it is moving forward, and we're working in partnership with several agencies. There is a Fentanyl is Forever campaign that's begun. Educate yourself on this issue in our community, it is killing a lot of all age groups, all ethnicities. It's not any one particular area, and a lot of it is first-time victims who aren't aware that they have taken fentanyl. So the group, the county-wide group is working really hard to identify, educate, and begin to put out the message of how you can combat this as an individual. The Boot Barn ribbon-cutting I attended, go out, they have not, more than just boots, they have lots of workwear, and fashions for old and young, and work and play. Also attended the promotion ceremony for Sergeant Brian Guerra, and I want to congratulate them, and we're getting very close to having all positions filled. It's just going to take us some time, because now that they're filled, and they're gone through training, they still have to go through learning Lompoc. So we're getting there, but your patience is appreciated, and you'll begin to see the improvements. The quarterly meeting for the Elected Leaders Forum to address homelessness was at the end of last month. One of the key pieces of information that I think everyone should write down right now is the Behavioral Wellness Outreach for Homelessness phone number. And the number is 805-884-6878. If you encounter someone who is homeless and has mental health, behavioral health issues, this is a number that you can contact, and let them know that the individual that you've encountered, where you've encountered them, so that they are aware and can assist in response. I was at the Old Town Market City Booth the past two Fridays, it's a great way to get out and meet our community, I encourage our council members to go hang out in the city booth, and talk to our community. Thank you to the city staff, you're doing a great job educating them on conservation, both water and utilities, and it's been great to be able to see how knowledgeable our staff is, and how comfortable they are in exchanging information with our community. Several Santa Barbara County area government regional meetings this month that I've already attended, the monthly meeting with our Board of Supervisor, Joan Hartman, and then a shout-out to our water conservation staff, they met here in this room last week with a Boy Scout and American Heritage Girls group that was working on their badge about conservation, and it was really great to hear all of the kids' questions. They had some really good questions about how to conserve water, how to do better, and how to show their friends and families how to save water, given our highest drought rate. As you heard earlier, we're having adult tennis lessons from July 26th through August 11th. You can register online, or with Parks and Rec, it's $50 for residents, or $60 if you're not a resident. The Air Pollution Control District Board has its 2022 Clean Air Grants available. Those are for businesses, whether you're ag, whether you have a lawn mowing business, whether us as a city need the grants, between $10,000 and $250,000 to replace equipment that is polluting. So go look at Air Pollution Control District Board's grants, and apply for them if they can help you. And then, last but not least, the 988 National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline went live nationally on Saturday. It replaces the 188 number, 1888 number, and it is not just for suicide, it is for emotional crises. So if you're having difficulties, it is a great number to call, there are 200 agencies across the US that have partnered with this to answer the phone, help direct you, and our local behavioral wellness is county-level, is a part of this. So if you have psychological distress, or mental health issues, not just suicide, don't hesitate to call the 988 number to get assistance, it's been designed like the 911, but in order to help you with that mental health and emotional distress. And the last thing I would like to ask is, for those of you interested in running for council, the positions that are available are District Two, District Three, and the mayor. That window opened Monday, July 18th, and it closes Wednesday, I mean, August 12th, which is a Friday, unless one of us decides not to run, and that extension is by a week to August 17th. If you're interested and want more information, you just need to reach out to our city clerk, her number is 805-875-8241, and you can also email her at s underscore h-a-d-d-o-n@ci.lompoc.ca.us. It happens every two years, and there's always an opportunity to get more involved in your community, so don't hesitate to look into it. My final request is not for a presentation by any of us or staff, but the school board has put their ballot bond measure back on, it is an economic development issue, and I'd like a council to support having either the school board member or staff come present the school bond issue to us, so they can have one more opportunity to educate the community. If this bond does not pass this time around, the school district misses out on a $46 million match. Our schools desperately need this money. The bond measure is an extension of what we already pay, not anymore, just an extension, and we desperately need to invest in our schools, invest in our kids, and the city itself cannot do it alone, so I'd just like support to make that invitation. Councilmember Cordova?
Support.
Councilmember Ball?
Absolutely, support.
I will work with the staff to get them on the agenda, so they can make the presentation to us. Thank you so very much. We will adjourn this council meeting to the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on August 2nd, 2022.